Is that on the order?
Yes.
All right, I first like to thank Mr. David Lowery from Erie County School Board Association for attending the meeting tonight. Thanks for all what you do for us as school boards throughout Erie County.
Okay. So, school board, why are we getting the feedback? I know. We're just getting feedback. Okay, trying to, okay, this is better. Never mind. School Board Recognition Week, October 18th through 22nd. Appreciation from the GLP, Eden Elementary and Eden Middle and High School. Mrs. Maxson, Mrs. Gregory, and Mrs. Doctor.
Good evening. The faculty, staff, and students wish to thank the board for your volunteerism and all you do for the school. Up on the stage, you will find frames as a thank you from the second grade teachers, books and pictures that have been provided by Mrs. Ziegler-Smith, Demay LaMarca, and also Kristy Height. And then there's collages that have been provided by Sarah Fiorella and her students.
There's also a small gift and I think a card from Eden Elementary.
Thank you for all you do for our students and our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hold on, buddy. Press the button so the green light's on.
My name is Andrew Strawbridge.
My name is John Agreco.
My name is Carly Wiles, and Eden Middle School Student Council would like to thank all of you for your service. The Eden School District is very fortunate to have such thoughtful and dedicated community members guiding and supporting our organization. Thank you for all that you do.
Good evening. I'm Danielle Answeeney.
I'm Patrick Schmitz.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Once again, I'm Danielle Answeeney.
I am Patrick Schmitz.
I am Connor Gleason. I am the Executive Student President of Eden High School. So, I just want to thank you guys for everything that you've been doing for us at the beginning of this year. I know that it's because of you guys we're, we go to school five days a week. And you know, that's something I really like as a senior. I would not want my senior year to be two days on Zoom or full remote. I personally did not like that. Didn't have interaction with my friends. Also, we had a homecoming week, which some schools didn't have because COVID and everything. But it's you guys and Mrs. Doctor especially, I think Mrs. Doctor, that coordinated all this so we could have a homecoming week. So I just want to say that I know us as seniors, we're really appreciative of everything that you guys are doing, and it's really nice. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Got some gifts too.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
That was a nice way to start the meeting. Thank you. So, do we have any requests to withdraw specific items from consent agenda? Right? That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, consensus items be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
It goes all the way down to, keep going, to public comment. This is the approximate position in time that the board has designated to receive statements from individuals and groups. The board will review all statements, then respond appropriately at a future meeting. All persons in attendance are required to sign the attendance sheet and designate the representation status. For example, parent, teacher, bus driver, Chamber of Commerce, et cetera. There is a two-minute time limit.
Apparently, nobody else wants to speak today, but as you know, I'm here, so I'll let you know. Thankfully, we've got somebody from the Erie County Board of Directors here. As you heard this young man say, they don't like that remote learning. I'm sure the masks aren't doing them any better. Forcing these kids to wear these masks, under a directive that is not even legally binding, is absolutely damaging these kids. As you can hear, they don't want to learn at home. They want to be in school. They want to see faces. A big part of learning speech is seeing faces, seeing expressions, watching mouth movements. It's not possible with these masks on. It's actually a form of child abuse, what you're doing to these poor kids. I'd like to see our boards start standing up. Take that pot of money you were talking about at a previous meeting. Use it to sue the state, like other school districts are doing. Take the masks off. Don't follow. Don't get on the train just because you were told to by a leader with no authority to tell you to do so. Let's start standing up for these kids. I know in one of the previous meetings, you stated your number-one priority is the health and safety of these kids. What form of health? What risk is there with this COVID to children? Zero. No risk to them. None. Drowning 800 kids per year. But do we certify all of our children as lifeguards? Teaching them how to swim, how to do CPR? If your number-one priority is the health and safety of the kids, shouldn't they all learn how to swim and do CPR? 600 kids per year die in automobile accidents. Does every kid in high school get traffic safety courses, driver education? Proper use of a seatbelt, proper use of a baby seat? If not, then health and safety is not your number-one priority. How many kids have died in shootings, school shootings? I didn't come through a metal detector. But health and safety is your number-one priority? You're following an order given to you by your leader, trying to earn your armbands for the party. Well, you saw how good that worked for Andrew Cuomo. He thought he earned his armband. He thought he was golden. He was the next presidential candidate in his mind, and you saw what the party did to him. So don't think that just because you're following the party, you're going to get your armband. Because you might just find the party eats you too. Because that's what socialists do. And that's what we have leading New York right now. You're doing nothing but follow the orders of a socialist party. You need to start looking at the health and safety of these children, not just in terms of a virus, a cold bug, that's not killing children, but the mental health of these children, being forced to wear these masks, being taught fear over a cold bug that's less deadly to them than the flu. It's sad. It's disgusting. And we need our school boards to start standing up for the children. Take that pot of money New York State gave you and use it against them. Use it to sue them and get these mandates done and over with. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, going to new business, resignations. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation for the purpose of retirement of bus driver Julianne Blanco be accepted effective September 30th, 2021. The board and administration wish to thank Mrs. Blanco for her 12 years of service to the district.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of teacher aide Corinne Gaskins be accepted effective October 6th, 2021.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of cafeteria monitor Deborah Smith be accepted November 1st, 2021. The board and administration wish to thank Mrs. Smith for her eight years of service to the district. If a suitable replacement for Mrs. Smith is not found by November 1st, 2021, she is willing to stay on until December 22nd, 2021.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Kendall Ann Bernardi, who is professionally certified in Students with Disabilities 7 through 12 Generalist and Mathematics 7 through 12, is hereby appointed to a probationary position in the Special Education tenure area for probationary period commencing on October 18th, 2021 and ending on October 17th, 2024. Salary is based upon ETA contract, Masters Step 8.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
Is she here? Okay. Right, okay. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Billy Joe Beck be appointed on probation as a teacher aide effective October 12th, 2021 and ending April 11th, 2022. Salary is based upon CSEA contract, Level 4, Step 1.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Dylan Tylock be appointed on probation as a microcomputer repair technician effective September 22nd, 2021 and ending March 21st, 2022. Salary is based upon CSEA contract, Level 9, Step 4.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
Congratulations, Dylan.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing his probationary period, Thomas Birmingham be permanently appointed as a cafeteria monitor effective November 17th, 2021.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Michelle Reynolds be appointed on probation as a registered professional nurse effective October 12th, 2021 and ending April 11th, 2022. Salary is based upon CSEA contract, Level 13, Step 8.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Deborah Holsher be appointed on probation as a part-time bus attendant effective September 17th, 2021 through March 16th, 2022. Salary is based upon CSEA contract, Level 4, Step 1.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Isabel McKetty be approved as a lifeguard for swim team practices and meets for the 2021-2022 school year.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the external audit, single audit, and extra class reports for the year ending June 30th, 2021, prepared by Drescher and Malachi CPAs, be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following textbooks be declared accessed and disposed of as the district deems appropriate. Discovering French 1, Louvre; Discovering French 2, Blanc.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, 2010 Thomas Bus Number 202, with that VIN number, be declared accessed and disposed of as the district deems appropriate. It has a $2,500 trade value towards the purchase of a new bus.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, effective October 14th, 2021, substitute rates be revised as follows. Monitors, cleaners, teacher aides, bus attendants, laborers, clerk typists, $14 per hour. Custodians and technology substitutes, $16 per hour. Bus drivers and nurses, $18 per hour. Retired Eden bus drivers, $20 per hour. Uncertified substitute teachers, $110 per day. Certified substitute teachers, $120 per day. Retired Eden teachers, $135 per day. Extended leave substitute teachers, that is 21 through 89 days in the same position, $135 per day. Long-term substitute teachers, 90-plus days in the same position, according to contract.
Second.
Any discussion?
If I may, so I want to thank Laura Feldman for her work on adjusting our subrates. Not only did she need to examine where the minimum wage is going, but we also looked at some surrounding districts. The minimum wage does not change until the end of this year, but this recommendation is to adopt these new rates effective tomorrow. As you know, we're in a very tight labor market, and we feel this will make our district much more competitive than it has been simply based on our rates.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the starting step rate for certified occupational therapy assistant Jessica Perkins be revised from Step 1 to Step 3.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Claire Dunwoodie be increased from a .5 FTE Special Education teacher to 1.0 FTE effective October 18th, 2021 and ending June 30th, 2022. Salary is based upon ETA contract.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Second.
Any discussion?
If I may again, so this recommendation has a lot of layers to it. And in a district our size, there are often things that are interconnected. By appointing Claire Dunwoodie to a full-time status, she's able to take over some AIS duties at GLP, which will then free up our music teacher to conduct choral lessons for our sixth graders who are in band, still want to take chorus, so they do so after school. And that allows, also allows us to do that on a day where we have transportation home. So you could see how there are multiple buildings and multiple layers involved just for that one small part of the job. And the remainder of her time is she is going to be used in assisting our K through 6 students who are out on quarantine and need home instruction, or at least, at least many of them. So I know Mary Maxson's here, and she's really led the charge in organizing that, and I'm sure she's grateful for some extra help there.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
Business report.
Good evening. I wanted to form the board. We have been approved for our 611-619 federal grants. We have filed for our ARP grant, which is federal money. No one in the area, as our ASBO committee meeting today, has received approval yet, but we're all waiting to see. It's like they did with the first level last June. It takes them a while to get ready to audit it, and they're being very cautious on making sure that they have everything that would sustain through an audit, rather than just our typical budget process. So we're waiting for approval on that. I wanted to point out to the board that the audit that you accepted in the management letter, there were no findings, just recommendations of some of the new Gaspys that are coming forward. So we will not be doing a corrective action plan this year. And then I wanted to let you know, one of the new buses we received is already back at the Matthews Bus Company because the engine went in it right away. And so we're waiting for them. In the meantime, they've loaned us another bus to use so that we can continue our routes. So while it's disappointing, we need to wait and get a new bus that's correct and not one that's not going to be reliable for our students. So, thank you.
Superintendent's report.
Thank you. So earlier today, the board received an email message from the Comptroller's Office, and that was notification that our district has been selected for an audit. And in this case, it's not a financial audit, it's a staff training audit. And specifically, what they are looking for is what training we provided for our staff in the area of mental health prior to September 15th of last school year. Not a month ago, a year plus ago. Okay, and we are one of 20 districts statewide that's been selected for the audit. Yesterday, Mr. Sudfin and Mrs. Feldman and Mr. Bliss and I met with the initial audit committee team, the audit team. They explained what the audit is, explained what they were looking for. They also explained that the information about the requirement for mental health training is one of the last lines in the SAVE legislation. And then they went on to say that the other districts they've talked to really didn't know too much about this requirement. They further went to say that there has not been much of any information coming out from the State Education Department on what the requirement is, but SED did refer to some information from the Department of Health. So, we're going to go through the audit process. I think this is going to be a great learning experience for our district as well as others in terms of what the Comptroller's Office is expecting. And this is an area where we will certainly get better as we move forward. Okay? Any questions about the Comptroller's audit? Okay. Moving on, last week, Laura and Chad and I visited the offices of Young &amp; Wright. Those are our architects. And we had what's called a page-turning meeting and where we had a deeper look at the designs that they are working on for our capital project. They started to get into a little bit more of the aesthetics of each of those areas as well. That work will continue. We are on time and ready to submit to the State Education Department for their review by the end of this month. That is important because that's, right now, it's only about a five-to-six-week turnaround, so that will put us in a good position to go out for bid after the first of the year. So, and Don and I have had conversations that we're going to do everything on time, our partners are going to do everything on time, and more likely than not, we'll run into some supply chain issues when it comes to construction. So, we're going to keep an eye on that and do the best we can there. Any construction questions? Okay.
No, I just think, you know, we need to be prepared that, you know, it may be a three-year project instead of a two-year project. I mean, I'm just seeing stuff in industry right now. If you go to order right now, it's 10 months. And I think one of the first things is new windows in this building was supposed to be starting in June of '22. I don't know where the window industry is right now, but I know where other industries are right now, and it's, I don't think it's feasible. So, just, you know, there was some information on the evening news tonight about, I think, 81 ships waiting to be unloaded, or waiting to be birthed in LA and Long Beach, and that continues to grow. And I see it in my industry daily, and it's, it's not pretty. So their talk is they're going to start unloading these ships 24 hours a day. The problem is, is how do you get all those containers out of Long Beach and LA? It's rail, it's by truck. Well, we're lacking truck drivers. There's not enough rail capacity to handle it. So, good luck with Christmas. It's the truth. So, just be aware, you know, we're going to be ready to go. Some of the projects, I'm just expecting and being realistic, that aren't probably going to happen this summer as we were hoping to.
Yeah. Well, in particular with the windows, that project is a full year long anyway for the install, with the hope that we start in June. And I agree with what you're saying, Don. The likelihood that we start on time is out of our hands. So we'll make sure that we're in the position that we need to be. I got a few more things. So, curriculum update from Kelly LaRosa. She wanted me to share that Eden Elementary teachers are examining two new math curriculums with the goal to select the program that best meets the needs of our students as we move towards the New York State Next Gen Learning Standards and Mathematics. So that's exciting that we're updating or looking to update our math program. Also, a really great opportunity for our fifth graders, and thanks to Mr. O'Hara, who's a middle school, high school health teacher. We have a group of fifth graders who are participating in a flag football league sponsored by the Buffalo Bills. Our students have already attended a session at Highmark Stadium, and they will be competing in a tournament against other schools at the Buffalo Bills Fieldhouse. So if you've seen them practicing, I think on maybe Tuesday up front, they're having a blast, and it's such a neat program. So is your daughter involved?
Yeah, my youngest is participating, and that was her first time at the stadium, and she was in, she came home, she's like, "That place is huge." And yeah, she's just having a blast. I'm glad that she's getting to do something. This is really her first field trip in a really long time, so they're super excited.
Neat. So one of the things that you're going to hear in moving on now, more and more as the year goes on, is it's really a requirement that our district develop diversity, equity, and inclusion program, programming, also known as DEI. We're in the start, we're at the very beginning of developing programming, as most districts are. But I want to give a shout out to the middle school and the high school, and really, Mr. Shaboni took the lead on this. They had a joint faculty meeting, oh, I think a week or so ago, where GLIS of Western New York came in. And if you're not, if you're not familiar, GLIS is an organization that provides support and programming to schools and other groups that's designed to promote a supportive and affirming learning environment for LGBTQ+ students. And the presentation was focused on creating allies and how schools can be supportive of all students. So that certainly goes along with our DEI current and future programming. So I thank them, and I thank their teachers for being involved in making sure that Eden is a welcoming place for all students. Just a couple more things. Our website review and updates are underway. Thank you to Lori Gregory and Brandon Watson and Kerry Reinhardt for taking the lead. That project is going to taking the lead. That project is going to take probably a while, but when you're, when you're trying to modernize something and, and really update it, it's, it needs to be done right, so. We'll keep you apprised of that. I've gone through three quarters of my report and I'm just now going to talk about COVID, so that sounds really good to me. We did host another vaccination clinic on Friday. We had twenty-six people attend the clinic. Of those twenty-six, eight received their first dose of the vaccine. So we'll continue to make opportunities available for our community and our school community and our greater community as well. Our quarantine numbers kind, tend to rise and fall. We had a, a high number early in the year when we had a couple of sports teams on pause. They, they've pretty much lessened right now. The majority of students who are on quarantine in our district are, are symptomatic of COVID, but not positive of COVID. And I'll remind you that there are an awful lot of symptoms that, that qualify as COVID-like symptoms. So those students can come back to school one of three ways, with a negative test after ten days, or with a doctor's note giving an alternate diagnosis. So if it's a child with allergies and I, and the doctor writes a note that, listen, this is seasonal allergies, they have them every year, then they can come back. Questions?
So do the tests have to be outside of Eden, the COVID, negative COVID test, or is it, can it be one of ours?
So that, so that would be a diagnostic test. We are not doing diagnostic tests on campus. We are doing screening tests and proximal tests. And then we're also doing testing for staff who have not provided proof of vaccination. The school districts are not doing diagnostic tests. The area county Department of Health, really at school's request originally, is not providing diagnostic tests on campus. And that was because schools, and I agree with this, and I, and these, these are almost the words that I, I used at that time. If, if people are ill or have symptoms, they shouldn't be here. So why bring them in to test?
Right.
Okay. All right, so October is an awareness month or appreciation, appreciation month for a few different things. As we heard earlier this evening, October is the month that we celebrate our appreciation for those fine people who volunteer as board education trustees. Being a board member is no easy task, as the people who sit at this table are tasked with making numerous decisions, some of which can be quite complicated. What makes their job rewarding, if I can speak for the board for a moment, is that the work that they do has such a positive impact on children, families and the entire community. Thank you to our Eden School District Board of Education members for your volunteerism and your dedication to making your school district and our community a wonderful place to learn and live. So I thank each and every one of you for your work and your volunteerism, for your support, not only of our district but of me personally, and I truly appreciate it. And then finally, I know you're waiting for my finally here. October is also Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I did not wear this pink tie by accident. I want to take just a moment to remind our audience and all who are viewing our livestream feed to remember that early detection is critical and fighting not only breast cancer but all forms of cancers. Don't hesitate to contact, contact your physician if something doesn't seem right. And by all means, keep your cancer screening appointments. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you. Student report, Connor.
All right, so yeah, as a student at Eden High School, I'd like to say that everything's going pretty smooth for the students so far in this first quarter of school. I, I mean, we're all back in person, obviously. And I can't speak for all the students, but for me, it's, it's been going really well, similar to how it was before COVID. Really, the only thing different is we're wearing masks, but I mean, that, I, I feel like that doesn't stop our education. So along with that, we also had our homecoming, which was like I was talking about down there, that was amazing. We were able to have a pep rally outside, which I thought was better than in the past having it inside. So there's things like that that just bring us back together. We had a homecoming dance inside that was pretty normal compared to how it's been in the past. And yeah, upcoming, we have around Christmas time, we're hoping to have another Christmas dance. And another spirit week. So I know during a homecoming spirit week, we saw a lot of, a lot of happy kids. Everyone was participating in all the different events, which was good. And yeah, I think it's, it's good that we're staying in school because I can see all my friends, all my friends can see each other. And yeah, everyone has a good time. So that's all I got. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, board report, roundtable.
I just wanted to say, just to kind of piggyback on what he just said, I was super happy that the kids were able to have a homecoming. It was meaningful to a lot of kids, kids who have never had a homecoming, kids who have missed going to homecoming these past couple of years, and it did bring some semblance of normalcy for them. And I think it's something that, you know, we're all desperately craving, but especially the kids and other than that, I think it's been a great start to the school year. I love having my kids back to school five days a week. It's night and day difference for everybody, so. Thank you to everybody in Eden who makes this place run like a well-oiled machine.
Anything else?
Yeah, well, I was just going to say, I, I I appreciate all the recognition that we had tonight, but you know, that's not why we do this. I'm really so proud to be part of this board because it's not only a great board, but we have a great group of administrators and, and teachers and faculty, staff, and especially students, great students. So you know, it's really nice to be part of all this, no matter what.
And just to piggyback off of that, I was not raised here in Eden. I'm what I call an implant. About thirteen years ago, I have a family that, a sister and husband that raised their kids out here, but I was asked if I wanted to do this, I don't know how many years ago, and I hesitated. But I thoroughly enjoy it. And this stuff, like she said, it's not like I don't say, oh, I can't wait till October, the middle of October to get all these little goodies. This is just a reminder that the good far outweigh the bad. And that's why we keep doing this. Thank you.
I just want to thank Mrs. Gregory, Mrs. Maxson and Mrs. Doctor, you know, for what, you know, you put together. To, to everybody else's point, you know, we're not up here for this, we're, we're up here for the, for the kids and the community. And you know, that's really why all of us are doing it. It's, you know, none of us have an agenda up here. It's, it's, let's make the right decisions for the kids, for the community and, and do the best you can. And you know, I'm glad to see, you know, when we're six, seven weeks in. And if this is the worst we've got right now, I'm, I'm considering it a win, so. You know, sports team seemed to be going off, musical's been announced. You know, I guess there is one question that may come up is what are, what are the, the concerts going to look like come Christmas time? You know, we, we don't know that yet. It's, it's changing. And the only reason why I'm asking that is my wife's a music teacher. And she's, she doesn't know what it's going to look like yet, so. But to that point, you know, kudos to, to the admin team for getting us to where we're at right now. And you know, hopefully it, it just continues to get better from here on out. Anybody else? All right.
Okay. The next regular Board of Education meeting is November seventeenth, twenty twenty-one at seven PM in the Eden Elementary School Auditorium. Now enter, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education enter executive session to discuss the history of a particular person or persons.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, have a good night.